All right, I will go ahead and call the December 8th special called meeting of the Franklin City School Board to order and welcome everyone. We're gonna try to make this one as, and that would be my phone, as painless as possible. It seems that Mr. McCurry is having an issue getting in. Um. Give me just a second. Ms. Moore, I'm gonna get Mr. McCurry to reach out to you. He's having trouble connecting.
Okay.
All right. You are at your desk, correct?
Yes, I'm gonna resend him the link now.
All right, and I just sent him your direct extension to call. All right, so welcome everyone and we will go ahead and get started. Um, we have a couple of things real quick since the special meeting is strictly finance. You may recall that we had, okay, he is in. All right, so we are moving right along. Trying to see if I could see it. All right, first thing we have is our consent agenda, those three items in our consent agenda. The first item is, as you may recall, we had a consensus poll a few weeks back for the budget adjustments. Those items are, um, there, Ms. Moore, can you pull those up? Yes. So there is the first one, which is the CARES Act funding, and all that is, is moving it to that FCPS Fund 15. And then we have the grants, um, which are showing right there. As you may recall, we had title, the title grants, sometimes there's an adjustment to that figure that we allocate for, so that's got those listed there. And then the oversea grant and the ESSR are there as well. So it's just reallocating those items and reseating them in. And then we have the budget adjustment for 21st century and the Title I grant. Any questions in regard to those items? Do we have a motion in regards to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I said.
We have a few seconds. Any discussion? All right, then moving by Ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and of course nays and abstentions have the same opportunity.
Bob Holt, Ward 1, aye.
Michelle Williams, Ward 4, aye.
Andrea Shelton, Ward 5, aye.
Is Mr. McCurry in?
I don't see him. I was just looking at the participants and I did not see him.
Okay, Carrie Johnson at large, aye.
And Amy Phillips, Ward 2, aye. That motion carries. All right, so that's got us down to Division Financials. So Dr. Sterling, I will turn that over to you.
All right, thank you so much. Again, we're gonna go over to financials. It's good to see everyone from here on out. I'll be supporting, answering questions, but it will be the majority. Mr. Ryder, Mr. Ryder, we had, she has several presentations for the board, so I'm gonna turn it over to you at this time, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Dr. Sterling, and good evening, board. Tonight's, tonight's first presentation will be the, uh, a wrap-up of the audit. The audit is complete. The audit is for the fiscal year 2020, which started July 1, 2019, and ended June 30, 2020. The background, so the background information on the audit is that, just for those of you who aren't familiar with this structure, the school division, we are, can we say, when we say audit, what we refer to is the city's financial records have been audited and we are a part of their records. The school division does not publish financial statements on their own. We are what's referred to as a discreetly presented component unit of the city. So where 100, page 165, 167, something like that, our financials are included in theirs. So we don't have like a 246-page CAFR like they do. We're just part of theirs. So when we say our audit is over, what means is the field work has been completed and they've, they've wrapped our financial statements up with theirs. Just for everybody to know, the, the actual final CAFR or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CFR, that thing is 246 pages long. Couple years ago was 193, so it just, it keeps growing. Okay, so what I'm presenting tonight are the school divisions, this is what the school division looks like in the CAFR, the public thing, when, when people are grading the city's bond, you know, to have a bond issue and they're giving them a bond rating, they, one of the things they look at is this financial stuff. This is on page 164. This is our balance sheet inside the city's CAFR. Nothing much really to report on. All of the assets and liabilities look pretty much the same as they did the year before. The only thing is, what you all, you are probably used to see is that city. They have to isolate the textbook fund and together, all of our grants, all of our local funds, which it's not too informative, if you want to know, like, what is the amount of dollars available for rollover? But down there where it says total fund balances 715,264, that's a number that we'll come back to a little later. But that's an important number. The other two fund balances are restricted in use and cannot be used for anything other than cafeteria or textbook. Okay. The next one is, this is the overall income statement, and it's on page 165. Just, it has a lot less detail than our financials. So they have like seven major components there, and the expense side. But let's go with the revenue side. On the revenue side, there's miscellaneous, then there's local, state, they call it Commonwealth, and federal. And you can see there, out of a 15 million, 15.2 million dollars in the school operating fund, eight and a half of it comes from the state, about five from the local, and about one and a half from federal grants. The next column over is the cafeteria, and the lion's share of that comes from the federal nutrition program. That didn't work. Okay, so let's see. Tried to swap screens here. Income statement, operating fund only, page 166. So this is just the, just the operating fund. So on that, on that last screen where it was a 15 million, this is the original budget on the left column, and then the final budget, that middle column, is because we, we might have, as you know, we have several different budget changes that we have to make throughout the year. So, you know, we started out with one number, we ended up with another, but then the actual figures, that's, this is the, the actual column is where we actually ended up with 15.2 million. Again, it's, is that a million dollars down in revenue? It's a million in grants. A million, two of it was grants. So, and we're not down that, that, that carries over into the next year. Same with the instruction. Did we spend one, three million less? Well, a big chunk of that is grants, which all care. I all the way down to the fund balance. The city will be, you know, inquiring up that in and out. Okay. Can you all hear me?
Little bit better. We're going in and out.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Tammy, the next slide. Okay, so this, this is the 246th page of the 246-page CAFR. The reason I put this in here is I just wanted to show the world and everybody that both the, the city and the school division have absolutely no deficiencies. There are no audit deficiencies identified in this audit. So every, you know, there's the, the opinions unmodified. If it were modified, that means it's, there's something wrong. Material weaknesses, no significant deficiency, none reported. It's in, and all you see is none, no, none. Unreported and unmodified. Okay. So on this slide here, could you zoom out a little, please? There we go. Okay, so one of the things that happened last year was that the school division spent about 1.2 million dollars on fixed assets. And on the next slide, we kind of detail a little bit of what, a little bit of detail, because, you know, two and a half pages of stuff that we bought. But Tammy, if you could put you over here. So on the building improvement, you know, we, we broke them down into some general categories. But, you know, bear in mind, we did have a $577,000 capital improvement plan that was supposed to be spent in 2020. So we spent that and then some. We did about $368,000 of building improvements. If you recall, let me add this up real quick, 126,97 $223,000, that was rollover money that had to be spent. It had to be spent. We purchased about $304,000 of combined band and athletic equipment. We, a part of the vehicle replacement plan from 2017, we basically, you know, did a lot of the vehicle replacements, a lot of them were cars. Well, they were all cars. We didn't buy any buses last year. And so, so we, we really took a big chunk out of the vehicle replacement plan, which was kind of overdue, too. The vehicles were starting to fail. And then we, we purchased the three activity buses to expand our mule distribution, and in addition to provide post-COVID transportation to activities and after for school events in the future. So that's what made up the 1,252. Alrighty. Tammy? Okay, I, you know, I kind of shared with you guys a couple of times, but thought I'd share it again in case it were asked. So the question may come up. In fiscal year 2020, the city granted this, the school division $335,000 in rollover funds. And so if anybody asks, did you spend that? Yes, we spent it on just what we said we would spend that on. Pretty much, all except the, the new software, the AI, different things with that column. But for the most part, we spent the 335,000 on what we told them we would spend it on. So at this time, if anybody has any questions, I can I will endeavor to answer.
I still, I have a question, Mr. Ryder. Is it still the case that the city wants us to do our own audit this coming year?
Oh, yes.
Hire our own auditors, I should say. Okay.
Right.
Yes, we've actually been given a letter from the city stating that they will no longer include our audit as part of their audit, that we have to have our own independent audit done.
Do you think they will give us funds to do that?
Hmm. I don't know if they would specifically, like categorical, like give us a categorical line item just for that. They lumped some fund us, so.
Okay.
It's not a bad thing to ask for. One of the rollover uses.
And we should look into that. Excellent.
How much does it cost?
Um. I, I don't know, I have to, I have an RFP structure ready to go, and I have approximately five firms that I'm looking at. One of the firms does like seven of the surrounding districts. It's like a three-name firm, and it's like everybody's using, I'm like, geez, they must really know what they're doing. So I was gonna slate that for January RFP to put that out.
Mr. Ryder, with the vehicles that were purchased, is that detailed in the presentation? And I'm only asking because I had a conversation with Mrs. Copeland's, and the vehicles that were purchased seem to be an area of concern for city council.
This, this presentation contained the only level of detail we felt prudent at this time, because, I mean, that's a kind of a subjective thing. There's so much detail, you don't know how much to put in or how much to leave out, but a lot of people just want a few bullet points and, and they're happy with that. But we had an actual vehicle replacement plan, and our transportation director, Melissa Vargas, it's actually through vehicle by vehicle and labeled which ones were replaced. So it was right there, right in line with our plan. It was approved by the board back in 2017.
Dr. Shelton, I can also add to that. I want to make certain that we don't get into the weeds when it comes to that type of curiosity. However, I've heard about the vehicles more than once. So I did take the approved 2017 vehicle replacement proposal that was approved by the board, and I did leave a copy. I met with and left a copy with our city manager, explaining all of the buses that were purchased and why, the vehicles that were purchased and why, the numbers that were replaced, and she was, she accepted it. She was like, thank you, I will definitely forward this to our council. So I'm glad you asked that, but I have provided them with at least three to four documents detailing that journey.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Dr. Sterling or Mr. Ryder? In regards to what we've seen so far?
Uh, yes, this is Jerry, we're six. I'm not sure if this is appropriate time or not, but I've been asked several, several times about the, the older gym needing repairs. I didn't know if the budget, proposed budget encompasses repair, the needed repairs on that building.
And I've been in there, too. Mr. McCurry, so I can speak a little bit to that, and the roof was replaced a couple of years ago.
Yes.
The building is structurally sound, and it is operable. There are individuals that are using that facility, the wrestling team and the robotics team. There was a leak which the maintenance crew has been addressing. Beyond that, as far as repairs, where that leak is, there's an area in the floor where the wood flooring, um, is, could be replaced once the leak is no longer an issue. Beyond that, everything in the building is, is usable. Now, mind you, is it aged? Yes, it is, just like everything else in, in our buildings. Yes, it's a little more aged because of the age of the building, but beyond that, everything in the building is structurally sound, and it's
Okay, I think the concern, the concern, I believe, is, was not the age of the building, because, I think, because it's an historic building. I think the concern is that the, there's a, I don't know if it's accurate, but a perception that there's ongoing water damage and that, you know, it's gonna be more cost down the road, if the longer that continues.
Well, and I can fully respect that, and I, and I do know, because I've had conversations, and we talked about that at a board meeting a couple months ago, that the, the maintenance crew was addressing the issue with the leak, and they, they thought they had a lead on what was causing it, and they were working on that. So I guess next step would be at our next, because they did update us at our last Building and Grounds Committee meeting, is that we will, of course, follow back up on that at our next meeting. And of course, any information will be brought to the board.
Okay, I get, and I guess the basis, my question is, if there's funds gonna be needed for that, do we need to account for that in the, this budget?
No, actually, what I want to do is, at that next meeting, when we come back together, I'm proposing that we look into having a joint capital improvement committee with the city as well, because the city funds the school system, as you all know. However, we do not have funds specifically earmarked for capital improvement, and that is some, that is a discussion that really needs to be had, because Charles Street Gym, though it is functional, it needs a lot of TLC, a lot of upgrades. I mean, we're talking about a building from 1935, the air quality, I mean, just everything. And in order for us to really maintain it, it, it has to be something that the city, as well as the school division, my recommendation, sits down together and look at capital improvement projects. So we're funded adequately to be able to have money earmarked specifically for wear and tear on buildings throughout the division, not just Charles Street Gym.
Correct. So is there a specific action item we can place that, like an agenda, I mean, that building specifically?
To, to have a discussion in regards to the building?
Yes.
We can, we can make note, Ms. Moore can make note that we will bring that back. Um, it'll probably be the January meeting.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, were there any other questions regarding the fiscal year 2020 audit?
Just a statement, congratulations. Doing an amazing job, and then also, congratulations, and thank you to the board for always holding us accountable, reviewing financials monthly, and making certain that they understand where every dollar is being spent. It makes a difference when we're working together, and then to get a clean audit is something that we should be extremely proud about. So I just want to say hats off to the board and to Mr. Ryder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next.
There we go. All right, rollover request. Go ahead to the next slide, Tammy. I wanted to right, I wanted to, I'll get through this slide pretty quickly and just, just stay to, state to everyone to keep it on your top of mind, that the appropriations that were, that provides the authority for the school division to actually spend the money that the city appropriates to us. But what the city does is they appropriate dollars, and the dollars they appropriate, the school division is not allowed to spend over that. We are allowed to spend under, but we are not allowed to spend over. And if we do spend under what they appropriate to us, usually that's referred to as a reversion, meaning we would like it to revert back to us. They're not obligated to give it back to us, but most cities in the Commonwealth and counties have a, have a understanding with their school division, that if their school division is responsible stewards of taxpayer money, that if they happen to run a surplus in a particular year, that oftentimes they have to, they have to reappropriate that the next year. So without getting too deep into the accounting, go ahead to the next slide. So I'm gonna start with a slide that shows you what is the Franklin's, Franklin City has a set of records, and the city has a set of records, and they must, and they are, they weren't always, but they must, and they are always in balance. If I record 1,000 in revenue, they have to record it, same with the expense, and same on the same lines. But you understand that their instruction line is one line, and ours is 450 general ledger numbers. That, that number, the sum of those have to match theirs every month. So at the end of the year, I reconcile our final financial records to what they are, you know, publishing in the CAFR. And so this is our side of the thing, way over to the rights, the textbook and the food service, they, they always, even on the city side, are identical. It's those next four that the city, that's why I've got all those blue arrows going to the next slide, they always lump all that stuff together in one, in one column. But the reason, what you're looking at here, this slide is, the restricted funds of Medicaid, federal grants, local grants, those three, those do not go into the calculation of rollover. It's just the general fund. So when you go to the next slide, visually, those four blue arrows are pointing to there. That's, that's what they see. So the prior slides, what we see, this is what they see. And you can see, it comes down to the unallocated fund balance. And so there's your, you see that thing down there where we had about a 61, $62,000 surplus there? That really wasn't, you know, entirely accurate, because that includes the, includes all the grants. But this is the way they account for it. And so we had a $653,000 beginning balance, and we had a 750, there's a 715 again, there it is again, 715 at the end of the year, June, June 30, that should say June 30. And so what they did for fiscal year 21, of that 715, they have already granted 252 of that to us, when we asked for the roller, rollover months ago. I don't know when it was. So they've already granted that to us, and the treasurer even sent me an email saying, you know, you got about $460,000, that's, you know, still an excess fund balance. And I'm like, yeah, I know. And so the portion of that 463, that's attributable to federal grants, is about $12,000. So the figure that we are asking for, here's the magic figure that we, everybody was waiting for. What do we ask for? $451,000 and $451,070. That's what we would, there's that revert, we would like that to revert to the school division. And the whole point of this presentation is to actually present to the board, A, the figure. On Thursday, I think they're gonna want to know where that came from, and why do we have another surplus? And then we would like permission to ask for that. So Tammy, go ahead to the next slide. Oh, so on this slide, I put them all together, so you can kind of see. And I just, I just wanted you guys to know, because I thought that they might ask a question. We had a $653,000 beginning balance, but we, we were granted the 335 of that as a rollover. So we really had a $385,000 surplus in order to bring us down to the net of 49,705 up there, without getting too deep into the accounting. But I know that their, you know, their treasurer's pretty smart gal, and she might say, hey, you know, if 653, if we gave you 335, you really had a much bigger surplus than 49,000. Yeah, we did, it was 385. I want to put that out there right up front. So when we go to the next slide, if somebody asks, well, how, how did you have a $385,000 surplus? Well. Did, so, two questions. Did the school spend the rollover we gave you last year? Yes. Well, how did you get a $385,000 surplus? Well, there's a couple of reasons. The surplus is a common, obviously a combination of two things. Number one, our revenue was $151,000 more than we anticipated. How did that happen? Well, and where did it come from? Well, that's the state revenue. Up there, $210,000 state funding, our ADM went up. And we don't find out the ADM goes up until March 31. And we don't find out the ADM goes up until March thirty-first, when there's nothing you can do about it. It's way late in the school year. And so if you take the two-ten and you subtract that local other where we were fifty-eight thousand dollars down, the sum of those two is a hundred and fifty-one. Then there were certain expense categories we just didn't spend. We 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 couldn't spend it in time. Um, there was a little thing called a pandemic. And because of the pandemic, we not able to actually hire all the people that we could in the timeframe that we needed to. So there were some, you know, the biggest one is a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars of instruction expense that wasn't spent and. You know, there's some eighteen thousand, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-three here and there. So we just, we had some expenses that we just couldn't spend fast enough and we had uh. Some good news, the revenue was a kind of a a positive variance that we uh, we weren't anticipating. So that can attributed to the three hundred and eighty-five, that's how the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar surplus occurred. And then the next slide shows you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Okay, so sure, sure, cuz this is, this starts on another.
Uh, okay, I was just, if you could explain what ADM is.
I'm sorry, average daily membership.
McCreary is average daily membership. So that is our enrollment. But it's not enrollment because what the state does is they look at on a daily basis, how many students are actually attending. Class and they average that out. So that's how they come up with ADM. It's not actual enrollment, it's looking at, the simplest way to explain it is. How many kids do you have attending school, actually participating in class on a given day? And they average that out over the period that they're looking at.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And and you know, one last thing on on ADM and state funding. They fund our, our state funding is calculated on on one. Average daily membership reading on one day, it's March thirty-first. If I could pay every family to send their kids to school on March thirty-first, I would. But that is the most important number in the entire year as far as I'm concerned, cuz that determines all your state funding. And what happens is the way Virginia works is they they take that figure, they. They adjust the the year that you're in based on that and they adjust and they determine the next year. They set the next year's funding based on that figure. So talk about a double-edged sword, so you know. If you're going along and your ADM is, oh, it's, you know, staying steady, we take a reading every month and if it's staying steady. When March thirty-first comes around, your your funding won't be, but if you have like a huge increase in kids, you're gonna get a lot of money between. In April, May and June. Conversely, they do this, if if your ADM goes down quite a bit, they take it away in those last three months and then you're really scrambling. So it's a, it's an annual game that we play with the state that every school division is the same thing for them. So at this stage of the presentation, what we've done is we've figured out, how did we get to the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar rollover funds? And uh, whenever a school division requests it, usually it is always for capital improvements. Because you don't want to rely on rollover, rollover is basically them giving us our savings account back. And you don't wanna hire a bunch of people based on that cuz it's it's pretty much a one-time thing. So once they grant it to us, that's why we always detail how we're gonna spend it and it's always capital. So at this very early stage of the year, what we're, what we're thinking about is um. Uh, in order to spend the four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, we're thinking about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars would go for the architect fees. To create the bathroom replacement bid. Can't bid it out until you get all the permits and the drawings and all that kinda stuff. The alarm system replacement in all three schools, well, we've been having, I don't know if you guys know this, but. It was put in with um, analog and hardwire. And uh, we have numerous false alarms, a lot of times they just turn the alarms off when they're there during the day. Nothing more irritating than kids are all in class and the and the police and the fire are showing up cuz you got a false alarm going off. Um, so we're thinking that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the bell schedule alarms, I don't know. Both Dr. Sterling and I were kind of surprised to find out when, when they were requesting digital clocks, we. I and we thought that those were just for aesthetics, that they were gonna look nice. But no, all the digital clocks in the schools would be all tied together for their bell system. Because the bell system is actually the phone in the classroom going off and it's hooked up through their phone system. It's not like there's bells ringing out in the hallway when they switch classes, it's the. It's the phone system, I did not know that. And so we figured maybe it's time to put in a wireless professional bell system. And then uh, another interesting thing, another capital type of expenditure that Dr. Sterling had brought up was the. To make additional lease payments on our lease because we still have ten years of that to go. And if we keep chipping away at the principal like a mortgage, you know, you save interest cost. And so we had uh, about ninety-one thousand, we would sleep for that. Tammy, on the next slide, dovetail in into that. Uh, I calculated, uh, if we don't do anything, you know, we'll have about another hundred and twenty-eight months. Of lease payments. Going out to SunTrust and that'll pay, it'll cost us about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in interest. But if we make this ninety and maybe if we're fortunate enough to make ninety in the next couple of years. Um, we can shave about forty months off of that and save about eighty-one thousand dollars in interest. And for those of you who don't know what this lease is for, it's for a bunch of uh, equipment that was installed back in two thousand and fourteen.
Which brings that eighty-one back to, back to the kids, back to the school division.
Right, right. So um, so what this presentation does, it's a request for a request. It's a request for the, to, for the superintendent to ask the city for. The, they call it the unallocated fund balance, we call it rollover. And usually when they grant it, it has to be spent by June thirtieth, so there's a real, there's a time, there's a time crunch there.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ryder or for Dr. Sterling in regards to everything he just went over?
I just have a comment about the reversion and the rollover. As far as I know, that goes back to nineteen sixty-one when the school division was separated from Southampton County. And that's an excellent policy because organizations that do not have that. There's a tendency to spend money at the end of the year just to get rid of it. And if we know that we have a little left over and we don't do that. Then we're much more efficient the following year because hopefully the city will give it back to us and. As Mr. Ryder pointed out, they don't have to do that. But my experience is that we generally get most of that or some of that back. So that's a really good policy and I'm not sure if that's universal for other school divisions.
Any other questions or comments?
Good job, Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. All right, Tammy, what do we have next?
Well, I think, I think you need a motion on this, correct, Mr. Ryder?
Oh, right, yes, that's correct.
So do I have a motion in regard to the um. Authorizing the superintendent to request the balance of the unallocated fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty?
I saw a move.
We have a motion by Mr. Holt, do we have a second? Have a motion and a couple of seconds, any discussion? Moving by Ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye and of course nays and abstentions have the same opportunity.
Ward one, Bob Holt, aye.
Marshall Williams, Ward four, aye.
Andrea Shelton, Ward five, aye.
Jerry McCreary, Ward six, aye.
Carrie Johnson, at large, aye.
And Amy Phillips, Ward two, aye, that motion carries. All right. I think we're ready to move on, Mr. Ryder.
All right. All right, so here we go. So one of the steps in the budget process is um, that we meet with the city once or twice a year. The first uh, joint session usually is for us to lay out. Uh, all of the um, costs and expenses that we. Back to incur in the next fiscal year over and above what was incurred this past year. Uh, last year, there were a number, well, let me get into the presentation cuz I think I addressed it in there. So in this first joint session, um, the, and so there again, I wanna, I wanna um, just. Let everybody know that the, we are a component unit of the city. And that we meet two or three times a year to come up with the amount of the appropriation that the city approves for us for the upcoming fiscal year. Because as you know, we are fiscally dependent upon them. So. Chairperson Phillips will recognize these next four slides. I took these slides from the um. Webinar that we did because it really sets down the structure of how the city in the, in the school division interact. And who's who and who does what. So here, uh, it explains that the school division in the city, we are, we are separate legal entities. Um, we all, you know, hire and fire our own people, we have separate tax ID numbers. Um, we each hold title to stuff, real estate, um, enter into contracts, we can sue and be sued. Down there on the third point, but our financial statements are included in their financial statements, so we don't publish our own. And then the last point there is that the city council's authority. Is limited to appointing school board members and appropriating funds. I can't, I can't overemphasize how important that is because um, out of a courtesy, we we allow, we we present these financial statements to them. But from a technical standpoint, they only have really two functions when it comes to the legality of it. So even though we're a separate legal entity in Virginia, we are, we are fiscally dependent upon the city and the state. As you guys saw, the state provides about little over eight million dollars of our funding and the city comes up with about another five. And so um, one of the, the main duties exclusively left to the school board on the bottom. Uh, by the constitution and the state code is that they have to propose an operating and capital budget to the, for the division. The city is the taxing authority. They send out the tax bills, they levy the tax, it's called levying the taxes. So they collect them and then they push the money to the school division. In almost every other state, the actual school division, working with the county, sets the levy and they levy taxes. Those make for some really fun board meetings, by the way. When all the citizens are there to scream at the board. And so the appropriations are actually, you know, it's a, it's a legal mechanism that, you know, they, when they say they appropriate, they say, okay. The school division's getting so much money and we, we have adopted our budget, the city. And in there is a line item for us and when they do that, then we have our money, that's it. We are, we now have been, it has been appropriated. And that's why every month when we do those changes, we say a change in appropriations. Cuz we have to change the appropriation that we originally agreed to. Every time we get a grant approved, we have to change the appropriation. Happens all year long, it's almost once a month, actually. And the next one. The next one is just a little bit of a technical thing that um, in in the Commonwealth. That that school divisions can be, they can have an appropriation that's called a lump sum or a categorical. Now, there's two ways the city can push money to the school division. They can either dictate each one of these major categories. Like you're gonna spend, of the five million, you gotta spend three on instruction and you can't spend more than three. You know, one on administration, one on pupil, pupil transportation or whatever. And that is extremely problematic for the city or county and the school because. Uh, it severely limits what the school can do, we can't push money in between those lines. And it forces the city or county to account for every one of their operating divisions the exact same way. You can't single out one for punishment by by doing it categorically, you gotta do the water department, police. Everybody's gotta do so that, most cities just say. You get a lump sum. But as we saw last year, we do endeavor to stay within our lines there. And uh, you know, when I get to March or April, I will be, we'll be meeting again with them to say, okay, we need to move money in between the lines. We'll do it usually once a year. In the spirit of camaraderie. So um, so what is our funding used for? Well, it's used for the school division to achieve its goals. Um, these are the same goals last year, I don't think the goals changed too much. So with that in mind. Uh, when we, when we send out the instructions to the folks internally, we tell them that they basically have to justify everything. So they need to detail both their personnel and operating requests. And and any new initiatives that might, that might come up. So uh, with, after a couple of, you know, serious planning meetings, the superintendent and I and. A lot of the folks inside have come up with the following. I should probably have that slide up higher, but anyway. Um, so we have three, three level funding, about a million and a half, about eight, about five million dollars, okay? So, oh, what I did wanna start out with, usually, last year. We had like seven or eight different wage change structures that we were trying to initiate to get people to come to Franklin City. Well, we achieved almost every one of them, I think every one of them. We, you know, item five was the biggest one, the teacher salary on on par with Southampton, so this is last year's accomplishments. The teacher, you know, the teacher assistants, you know, we raised them up to about fifteen-five, five fifty. Uh, bus drivers, we raised their hourly wage, the custodians, the secretaries, bookkeepers and the teachers. Um, and so for this reason, because we did address a lot of the existing salaries at the time. We really aren't gonna be proposing anything more than just a two percent cost of living increase for twenty twenty-two. The remainder of the things that we'll be asking or informing of are actually new positions for specific reasons. So. So now, I don't know, Dr. Sterling, would you like to take this, these two, three slides over? Cuz it goes school by school, teachers by teacher and, yeah, you guys worked on that.
Okay, are there any questions at this time about what Jeff talked about? All right, great, I'm gonna go through this um, relatively quickly. Um, when we meet with the um, principals and we do a budget request, they bring, they send us back. Uh, information with what they want. And then I do a needs assessment with um, the principals. And then I look at our survey results cuz we do a community survey and then I look at the state of where we are. The state of where we are, you already know, in the spring and next year, we will be coming out of a pandemic. Which we call post-COVID and how would we, um, how are we going to make certain that our building is structured? With the appropriate personnel to support our students getting back on track. Because you already know it's going to be a process for our students coming back into the building, getting re-acclimated. Rules, work, the whole nine yards when it comes to structure. So we looked at each school and we're proposing for the new budget. An increase in our budget, but most of it is going to um, positions. So number one, our elementary at S P Morton, we are requesting another gifted teacher specifically for S P Morton. As you already know, they have approximately six hundred students and they have the bulk of the gifted students. We have a dynamic um. Gifted teacher who is actually overworked because she is one teacher for three schools. And when we continuously add more high school credits, more STEM programs, more STEM activities, more higher learning. When you do pullouts with gifted and even just having the gifted teacher structure programs in the regular school day. We're going to need another gifted teacher. And we're uh, uh, for, for next year. Three new teachers to achieve students to teach a ratio, for teacher. Three new teachers to achieve students to teach a ratio, for teachers to teach a ratio of 15 to one coming out of a pandemic. It is not going to be feasible for any teacher to have a class of 20, 25 and above. We need to make certain that our classes remain small, manageable, because there's a lot of learning loss that has to be regained. So therefore we're proposing a smaller class size, which is more manageable, which has more targeted instruction for our teachers to be able to provide, especially in grades three, four and five. And the reason why I say three, four and five, because our kindergarten through second grade already have classroom, we already have a classroom reduction grant from the state, but we can't go over 18 students anyway. So that's already taking care of the not our three, four and five. So we're putting emphasis on making those class sizes much smaller. And also, again, to support learning loss due to closure of schools and targeted social emotional support with an emphasis on PBIS, as you already know, that is a district initiative. Another area of concern, even in the pandemic, has been truancy. We'll have kids come in the morning, but we won't have them come in the afternoon. So we're trying to have an attendance clerk slash secretary work specifically with S P Morton while our other truancy officer services the secondary level. Again, you have an one individual covering the entire school division. And coming out of this pandemic, we are really looking to make certain that our kids get back into the classroom, back into a routine, attendance is consistent. And as you already know, attendance is tied to finance. If they're not in the classroom, we start losing funding. We cannot have that. And one of the things I keep, and I'm not going to take long, but you know, when it comes to Franklin City Public Schools, I'm going to do a plug all the time. We are 35, about 35, 36 students down from last year that haven't been accounted for and we're in a pandemic. There are a number of school districts that have lost two, three, four, 500 students. We've lost less than 50. So we need to make certain that we gain those students plus recruit more back to our division. So we're not in a great place, but we're not where we used to be. Put it like that. And we're not trying to go back that low. So those are the requests for S P Morton. J P King Middle School, restore the administrator back at J P King. As you all know, Mr. Parker, he still is a new principal that really needs a lot of support. He is the only administrator. So anything dealing with suspensions, administrative meetings, outside of the building administratively, the only person that can legally under contract be pulled is Mr. Parker. And it is really, really wearing on him, especially with the redesign and with the new high school model. So we're looking to restore another assistant principal at J P King to be able to support Mr. Parker as well as the early high school program that is being, that has been implemented since the last two years in, in the past two years, excuse me, at J P King. Another area that I feel is extremely important is we really are looking to have pushed that STEM program at J P King. So when they pull up to Franklin High School, they have a solid foundation of math and science. That is their critical area. That is their focus area. And that is the area where a lot of children are funneling into. Therefore, we would like the classes to be smaller and we also would like more teachers to be able to teach geometry as well as algebra. Right now, we have to be visionaries board members. We have to be visionaries. And I say that because we have one teacher who is absolutely dynamic, who teaches geometry. Well, is she going to be with us for another 10 years? We don't know. And with this particular program, we can't roll the dice. So while we have her, we need to be able to bring in other math teachers that could teach to that level while she trains and mentors. So while she begins to transition within the next five, 10 years, we have other teachers coming in to continuously support that program as well as having over 50% of your students that are taking high school mathematics. We need another math teacher to teach higher, higher a level math as well as science. The redesign is looking to offer environmental science, which is also a high school credit at the middle school to push that STEM program as well. But we'll also need, as you know, science is their lowest test scores. So we want to make certain that even though they're passing, they're not in the eighties or the nineties. So we're trying to make those classrooms smaller as well. Again, excuse me, let's go down a little bit again. I just want to just reemphasize, there's the data projected for 2021 school year, over 55% of J P King students will take advanced math and science courses for high school credit. And that is just your seventh and eighth grade population, only because your incoming students will take pre-algebra, which we already have those teachers that teach the eighth grade content in sixth grade. Next, this is way overdue, long overdue, our dedicated registrar for F H S. This registrar will deal and maintain all official records, conduct transcript audits, point of contact for past graduates. You all know that anytime you need additional records, it always goes to the registrar at any high school. Now, unfortunately, it goes to our secretary. Our secretary has to go through microfiche or files that are actually files and they're not even electronic. Some of you that are sitting on the board are past Franklin graduates. You cannot go online and order your transcripts. You cannot. So the registrar would be responsible for digitalizing all of the transcripts, all of your records. If you're going to the military, if you need documentation from, for a job, the registrar would do all of that, which the counselors can remain focused on the students and the secretary can remain focused on the ma, the maintaining and management of the front office. Instead of being pulled or unfortunately having past graduates and individuals seeking information, not even past graduates, but people seeking information and having to wait sometimes up to two to three weeks just to get the information because we have to actually go through files and files and files of, of data just to try to retrieve their diploma. Any questions on the registrar?
I actually have one question. No, no, not on the registrar.
All right. Next you have a dean of students. You know that from the past years, we've been trying to get an S R O with no luck because it is very hard to staff, to even get police in our own police stations. So therefore, when you're having students come back from an unstructured environment, even though their homes are structured environments for their homes, but now they're coming back into the school system. Travis is going, excuse me, the high school principal, I try not to use names. The high school principal is definitely going to need support with discipline and just getting our students acclimated back to the culture of F H S. Before our students left, they had an amazing culture at F H S and people, the students knew exactly what to do and when to do it. But right now, Mr. Phelps would be the only one really focusing on discipline because the, the principal, because the assistant principal does a lot of work with instruction. And instead of pulling them, we would like to add a dean of students to support them with the discipline, truancy and also attendance as well as instruction. Two additional teachers, one in math and one in English. As you all know, two years ago, Mr. Phelps was, had a math and an English teacher additional, and we would like to restore that. The English teacher, we really are looking for an advanced English teacher, full-time, that will teach dual enrollment. That is our primary focus for that position as well as another math teacher to teach higher level mathematics because he has a high number of students coming into his building that already have achieved the level of algebra one or geometry. However, we're looking for math teachers to do geometry, algebra two and higher mathematics because our students are, they're, they're ready. And we need to be able to staff that building appropriately with content area teachers. And as you know, we, we may be losing some of them. Again, we have quite a few teachers that are up there 25 or 30 plus years of teaching. So we need to be visionary's team and replenish that staff so they can be coached from these high quality teachers that are still in our building. And a part-time athletic director for F H S. F H S, as you already know, have 18 plus championship caliber sports programs. And we need someone full-time, excuse me, part-time, at least 20 to 25 hours a week, maybe 30 possibly, just to do athletics. It is extremely important that we have people that sit on V H S L that are monitoring, following all the rules, making certain that everything is where it needs to be management-wise with all of the sports programs. And just having someone come in for a stipend is not enough with the quality of programs that we have. And our programs are all year round. I mean, athletics never stops at F H S. I think they take a break in most, well, after track season, it's still in June. It may take a minute. No, because then they'll start volleyball. You know, brought practice in July and August. So it just never stops. Okay, next slide. I think that might. Oh, okay. So here it is all in the nutshell, salary increases for cost of living. Personnel is close to $1 million, which is $862,000 projected for all of the positions. And then as you go down, this is definitely something we have to talk about with the city. $2.3 million to refurbish bathrooms for all schools. We have gotten preliminary estimates. And it's going to take a lot to refurbish the restrooms alone in our school. And we've often talked about bringing a committee and getting a team of people together to start the work on having conversations on new school. And if we're going to spend $2.3 million on the restrooms, then it's time to really have a conversation about where do we see our schools within the next five and 10 years? And that'll be 2030. And it's time to have a facility that reflects the work that we're doing, that we expect our children to be doing and the careers we expect them to enter into. They should have a facility that reflects that. Projected insurance can increases at 5% as well. So if you can go to the next slide. This is a bathroom at Franklin City Public School. So I'm not just coming in asking for, because we want it to look good and cosmetically. But when you send your children to Franklin City Public Schools, we, we demand the best, we expect the best. And that includes our facilities as well. And we can have our children come into or come back to something that we have the power to work with a city council to ensure that we have what we need to make certain our students go into a facility that reflects what we expect and what our city expects. So I'm looking forward to bringing those teams together and having our board start conversations with the city specifically to work on capital improvement for our children.
I have a question. Um, I think it may have been a while ago, maybe August, when we had talked about CARES funding and part of that was, I don't, I can't remember if the bathrooms were just on the wish list or if that was like on one of the priorities, but is that CARES funding considered to be part of what you're asking for? Or has that been allocated towards something else?
I'm glad you said that. I'm going to start the conversation and then I'm going to have Mr. Ryder go back in because when I started looking at that and we started allocating funding and we, we, we really felt, hey, we're going to get this done. And it was a drop in the bucket with the CARES Act funding to be able to do this. However, the money that was allocated, we do plan on putting that with funding that we hopefully receive from capital improvement. So I'm going to have Mr. Ryder say a little bit more about that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sterling, turning it right over in the toilets picture. So, so on the next. So I'll pick up where the toilets leave off. So the extent of the project, as you can, this is a quick summary here. We had a vendor try to put all the dollars together for us. The scope of the project is about 80, almost 80 bathrooms, about almost 10,000 square feet of, you know, divided by 80 bathrooms, 120 toilets, 49 urinals, 170 sinks. So it's quite a project. Now, remember, when the old stuff goes out, touchless goes in. So, you know, we don't want people, that's what we're, it's one of the things we're trying to do that is kind of tied in with COVID, not touching anything with hands and stuff. Then you, the less you can have to wash your hands and you know, more sanitary it is. I was texting Tammy and I thought there was another presentation tonight, but I can't find it on the board docs.
Can I ask, Ms. Jerry at War Six, can I, can I backtrack a second? Ask a question on the regarding the the positions for the truancy, attendance secretary, clerk at S, S P Morton and the dean of students. So if I understand your, what you are saying is that because the students have been away from the facility, they've been learning from home, that you see an increased need for these two positions. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what, what do you foresee after a year, two years? I mean, because these are full-time positions, correct?
Yes, these are full-time positions and you're talking specifically about S P Morton?
Well, that and the high school and Franklin High School.
Oh, most definitely, most definitely. Especially S P Morton, when you, you already know, that's the foundational years for our students. So you deal with a lot of discipline, excuse me, at the elementary level because they're getting acclimated and socialized to the environment. Well, we already know they've been away from the environment and there's been a lot of learning loss. And though we're doing a great job with virtual learning, we don't get the kids every day, all of the time. So we're going to be working with a lot of learning loss. So that means that we need to really focus on having smaller class sizes so the teachers can really hone in and target on accelerating those skills with the children. Normally they, in a third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade class, you may have 19, 20, maybe 22 students in a class. They can't really go over 25, 28 students. That's way too many students coming back from a pandemic to one teacher. So we need to lower that number by adding an additional teacher. So, and which also helps with the discipline as well. Now going into Franklin High School, Franklin needs Franklin High School because it has so many moving parts. Every time the bell rings, he has 300 kids in that hallway and they're coming back. They have, imagine you haven't seen your friends in almost a year. He's going to be doing more hall sweeps than he could imagine, but he can't do it alone. So he's definitely going to need some support. I really don't put timelines on when we would need these positions because we really don't know. But when it's time to phase them out, we bring it to the board and we never want to leave anybody out. So we either move them around into another best, best fit where we see another need for the division. But right now, after COVID, realistically, after COVID, uh, realistically and talking to teachers, talking to my superintendent colleagues, we're looking at maybe three to five years of getting back into a normal functioning environment. From co- from, uh, all of this learning loss and socialization and social emotional learning that hasn't been, uh, given to our children.
Well, and I hate to say it, but I'm going to be the realist here, um, in the conversation. One of the.
It wasn't real.
Well. You, you were nice about it.
I was nice.
One of the things we've got to be real about is what has been going on in our community as of late. That is impacting the, even the youngest members of our community. So these kids where they are, when they're normally within our school buildings, during the school year, there's structure. And there's, um, that guidance that comes along with not just our, um, guidance counselors, our school counselors, but also with the teachers a lot. Our students don't have that right now. They haven't for nine months. And it's going to be possibly longer than that because even at best, we won't be back on, in any capacity with students in the building until at least February. And that depends on how our COVID numbers are looking at that point. So these students, even the youngest ones, have not had that structure that they normally get within our buildings. And it's going to take a while to re-acclimate them and to bring them back into the fold. And that's going to take a lot of hands and, um, to actually be able to do that. And it's going to take time.
Yeah.
That's my two cents.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I also want to add from a teacher's perspective, um, low student, um, to teacher ratio is best for the children in terms of their learning, in terms of their being able to get what, what they need. And like Dr. Sterling said, one teacher to twenty-plus kids coming from la- la- um, lack of structure, lack of discipline, not knowing what the home environment is, not knowing what their social emotional state is. That's at, really asking for a chaotic situation if we don't lower those classroom sizes.
So do these positions then, I mean, it's taking stress off teachers to maintain an orderly classroom or, or the teacher doesn't have to focus on discipline as much or?
Exactly. Exactly. That is the whole goal. She's able to really focus on instruction and not trying to manage, uh, twenty, twenty-five kids. That's just way too much. But you're right, it does put the emphasis back on, uh, a good, sound, structured environment where she can handle the discipline.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sterling, I only had one small question in regards to that dean of students and to the truancy, um, clerk. We have, correct me if I'm wrong, we currently do have a, um, truancy officer?
Yes, we do.
How would those two and that truancy officer play into each other? How, what, what would be the capacity of that truancy officer at that point?
Oh, they'd be doing some of the same work. However, you would have a truancy officer for the secondary school. And you would have a school and truancy officer, I mean, and slash the clerk, attendance clerk for the elementary. And, um, you know that if you combine both the middle and the high, they equal the elementary. So they're having basically the same, but just a split. And then there are different needs that the truancy officer has when he deals with a secondary student composed to an elementary. Secondary students, you're kind of dealing more so with the student. And in the elementary, you're dealing more so with the parent. So that's why we're having them as the secretary in that building, knowing those kids, working with the kids, uh, as the secretary, but focusing primarily on attendance.
And, and I will add, because of course I'm, I happen to know a little bit, um, as we progressed into the beginning of this current, um, academic year. As those students were starting to come back into the instructional environment, so virtual. We, I, I know our truancy officer was actually, those students that we, we didn't have show up, was going actually out to try to make contact if we were not able to make contact via phone or what other methods we were using. The truancy officer was going out door-to-door, knocking on doors. But we also had people that were helping him. So I guess that also presented kind of a visualization that there was a need and of course, doing what we're in, that need is, is going to be even greater once we have students that have to be in the buildings.
Absolutely. And, and, and finding our students as well as delivering laptops. Uh, we just tapped on our truancy officer to get with our, our foster and homeless and deliver our winter kits. I mean, they do, uh, multiple functions and they also have to prepare, uh, documents to go to court. For our most severe, uh, students that are truant. So to have one person for an entire division, i- it's a stretch. But to have a secondary in an elementary, we can see our attendance really moving in the next year or two to hopefully ninety-eight, ninety-nine, which is always what we strive for, percent daily attendance.
I have a question about capital campaign. Um, looking at that figure for, um, refurbishing the bathrooms, two-point-three million. And I know building another school is more, is more costly. But is that a consideration in the capital campaign to build new schools?
Well, um, looking at the survey results that we had with our community, uh, we had, and I will be sharing that with the board as well. We had overwhelming response as a yes to, uh, Franklin City Public Schools in favor of building three new schools. Uh, overwhelming yes, uh, to raising taxes, uh, to make certain that we support that. However, we're just gathering data. But we need to bring that together with a joint capital improvement committee and school committee to, uh, look to see about that feasibility now for me. When you look at two-point-three million dollars, I just need about seventeen million more to build a school. So it's going to either be, start with the bathrooms and maybe we do a, a complete refurbishment and overhaul of the inside. There's a lot of different ways we can go about this, but we still have to have dedicated funds to getting it done. And I know one of those is nineteen-sixty-five and there's been a lot of, do you have that slide, um, Mr. Ryder? You don't have the building slide, do you?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Because we, we'll have all of that for the.
No, I only, I only focused on the.
Okay, it's been a lot of additions, a lot of addition. Nineteen-eighty-six, there was a gym. Nineteen-ninety, there was, um, trailers. I mean, we've got to get away from those trailers. They're, they're almost twenty years old. It, it.
They're modular units, modular.
Thank you, darling. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Not trailers.
Not trailers, modular units.
Not trailers.
Well, I'm severely old-school then. Modular units and they are, then we really need to get away from this. Okay, can we go to the next slide? I don't know what we have on that one.
I think so.
Unless you want to see the bathrooms again. Okay, go. All right, those are, are there any more questions and answers?
Um, I have a question. Hopefully you'll have it. I know we haven't gone through every, you know, line item of every area. But thinking to athletics and when we are back in school and when, you know, we are doing more competitions. Um, normally we rely a lot on gate fees and such to help pay for the officials. Has there, uh, been anything, uh, talked about, like earmarking some funds to cover what we have lost? Because we haven't had gate funds in almost a year?
Right, we haven't had gate funds and you already know the most, uh, the athletic program that generates the most is football. So that would be, uh, gate funds for officials and everything. What we do is provide, uh, Mr., uh, the high school. Right, we provide them, uh, funding and support for officials. But we have not planned for next year. And if we're going to add all of that within our budget, considering we already know the football season is not going to be like it was in the past. So, uh, Ms. Johnson, as usual, great question. Did not foresee that, uh, question coming and we have not had that conversation. But Jeff, we need to earmark that because she's right. Football will not generate the revenue that they did in the past and will not be able to support officials, uh, next year. Therefore, we will probably have to increase that amount in the budget.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Always an advocate for her athletics. Which is true. Thank you. Tammy, um, next slide. We'll, we'll take as many questions as you like.
I have, it's all in this one. Yep.
Okay, and then we have the, okay. And here's the revised budget calendar. Mr. Ryder?
Yes, um, there's the, uh, we had, we revised our calendar. Usually we put one out based on, uh, the dates we think we're going to meet with the city hall, um, some of the key dates. Uh, now, uh, now that we have December, um, well, December tenth is coming up. And then, um, then we will really, uh, January fourteenth is the next key date for the school work session. That's when we actually bring the whole budget together, all the best revenues, estimates that I can figure and determine. Where I think sales tax and lottery proceeds are going to come from, on, on the revenue side. Or, well, a feeling for what the ci- city's going to be giving us and rollover. And then we really, you know, s- person by person, step by step, uh, I put the whole income statement together. And we present that first draft, um, uh, January fourteenth, uh, March fifteenth. Um, March fifteenth is another key day. It's in yellow there that, uh, our, our final school board, uh, our final school budget is due to the city manager. Um, then they mulled it over and about ten days later, we will meet with them in our second joint session. And, uh, after that, um, you know, we both go our separate, they adopt theirs, we adopt ours and we're ready to start twenty-twenty-two.
And I want our, our board to know though, uh, this is an accommodation that we do. Because by statute, our, our, uh, budget is due by April first. Not in March. So we actually accelerate our budget process, which is a lot on us, uh, to get this in, uh, for the cities. The accommodating. Okay, yeah?
All right, that was it, um, for the budget calendar. And just, I thought I'd throw this in there too. This is where I got my dates of, there's, there's the March fifteenth in blue and the March twenty-fifth. This is the city's calendar.
Just to remind everyone, our meeting Thursday with city council was at the high school still, correct?
Okay.
Correct. And that's correct.
Good.
In person.
Is there a closed session or just starting at seven?
Just starting at seven.
Yeah.
So we did not go over the CARES. You put that slide up and it was, um, something that the city, um, specifically request, requested, um, that CARES, that, uh, funding that the board had already approved. Um, money was spent. Do we go over that slide that Dr. Hollerin, uh, provided you? Because I, I can't remember.
Wait, one, the, um.
Ryder.
The budget amendment?
Yeah. I had a different, uh, I had a, a much in-depth, uh, analysis of the CARES funding. But I think Tammy wanted, I think we were going to, um,
Okay.
reduce it down to about two, two slides was actually approved, uh, what was applied for and what was received.
Okay, we'll just get that information to the. Miss Moore?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Because I, I put together like a seven-slide presentation, you know, and, uh, but it was pulled, I think it was pulled from this meeting because, uh, maybe I think it was too detailed or something.
Sorry, board members, we'll get it to you.
That's the consummate overachiever.
Sorry about that.
It's too much, it's too much.
It's a lot. So that is the board presentation for the, um, requests for the rollover. And, um, the presentation that will be provided during the joint, um, session with the council. Um, are there any questions, any suggestions, anything you think we should, uh, think about as we begin to move forward? Things you foresee, um, that we have not touched on?
Board members, is there anything, any questions, any conversations, any feedback?
Uh, yeah, this is Jared.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, uh, well, I, I don't have any specific, I mean, my question is what do y'all expect to come out of the meeting on Thursday? Or what questions do you, do you, uh, expect, Ms. Phillips? From the city side?
That response or any board members? I'm going to reserve that.
Well, I'll ask the board members then.
I will say that the city has already indicated at, from their last meeting that they would be, um, asking for, um, breakdown of what the one-point-two million in assets were. As well as, um, the seven-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar fund balance. Um, so those were two questions that they indicated they would be asking, um, in regards to this, um, joint session Thursday night. Um, they also have asked for an itemized breakdown of our CARES Act spending. Um, specifically stated that, um, while they did understand that, um, they had no control over how the money, they did want to break down so that, and it was stated, um, when it came to us requesting funds, they would know what we have already spent money on, so we wouldn't be double-dipping per se. Um, so those are the three items that, um, I am aware of. Now beyond that, I, I have no clue.
What were the first two items again?
Um, the first two were the one-point-two million in assets, which Mr. Ryder went over, um, earlier in the, the presentation. And the other one was the seven-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar, um, excess fund balance left over at the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
How we ended up with that much left over.
Okay. Thank you.
How do you feel about that breakdown, um, as we went through the presentation? Do you feel like that was clear? That explanation was concise or would you like to see more information? When it came to CARES, the fund balance, I think Jeff did an excellent job, but that's, that's from our technical lens.
Mr. McCurry, do you have an opinion on that?
Can you, uh, I had trouble logging in it.
Okay.
Yeah, I had trouble logging in the beginning. I was wondering which document had the CARES.
Can we go back to that?
Where, where he has the lines.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah.
Keep going. All right, this is the one-point-two million in assets. So this is the breakdown of, um, that one-point-two million in, um, capital expenditures that they were looking at?
Yes, okay. Yes, that one, uh, I guess the CARE, which is the CARES Act then?
The CARES Act, um, I don't recall seeing that breakdown. I think that was the one, Mr. Ryder, that you were saying that you had seven pages and were trying to get it condensed down to two.
Yep, actually that was a, a different, a totally different presentation.
Gotcha.
Uh, I don't know where that's at.
We didn't do, I, and I apologize, board members. We did not do the CARES Act, uh, breakdown for you all because it is something that we already broke down for you. You all approved it and. And we didn't feel the need to go back through that all over again when it's something that was in our regular board meeting. But it's just something we're going to present to them.
Okay, that's fair enough. Do you recall which meeting that, that was?
Mr. McCurry? Yes, I think if you search in August, CARES, something in board docs, you're able to access that. And if not, if you get in touch with me, I'd be happy to send you that link.
Very good, thank you.
And part of that, I think too, Dr. Sterling, not to speak for you, but the focus of the joint session was to look at prepping for that budget for the next academic year, not rest for respect on this year and prior budgets.
The joint session is always, right, the joint session's focus is always about giving them an idea of what we're going to ask for and our needs. Almost just giving them our needs analysis, assessment. But this is just something extra that they're asking that has been out on our website, approved by our board and also accounted for during the most recent audit. So there's, it's public record. But this is, I think Jeff did an outstanding job just having this concisely put together right here on this slide without going into the why. And I want our board, this is just my recommendation, the why is always for, to support the advancement and improvement in our academic and athletic programs and our overall programs at Franklin City Public Schools. And that is why we allocate and spend and approve funding for these particular items. And anything outside of that, I don't know how the board would respond.
On my, my, on my side, I was looking for a way to be prepared, you know, so that's good. I did find the document there from August sixth, which was before I joined the board.
Okay, so are we ready for our joint meeting?
I'm ready.
I think we are.
We're ready. We're ready.
Absolutely, it's all about working for the betterment of the city and
That's right.
and the betterment of the students within the city. So as long as that's our focus, that's where it should be.
Exactly right. Okay.
Absolutely.
I'm going to give, give the floor back over to you, Madam Chairwoman. That concludes our budget presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sterling. And thank you, Mr. Rider, as always. Couldn't imagine doing this without, with anyone else, I can tell you that. Anyone have any questions, any further questions for Mr. Rider, for Dr. Sterling, for myself? As we head into this meeting Thursday?
I would just like to thank our superintendent for her leadership, for Mr. Rider digging into the details, as he always does, and for the board to ask some really good questions. And I think we're very well prepared for Thursday night.
I do have one more question. I'm still learning about, you know, the budget process and when things have to be put in for request. But as a member of the CTE Advisory Board, I know that we are toying around with the idea of possibly bringing some innovative programs to Franklin High School. And that of course would require additional staff. Is that something that we have to earmark prior to the next budget season? Or can, like, can we do that as it comes about?
Well, right now, the, you all are having those conversations on what pathways that you all would like to have. And then we still have to do that degree plan, a synopsis of those pathways, and then send them up to VDOE to get approved. Once they come back and get approved, then we will bring it back to the board that these are positions that need to be created in our, our budget. So remember, you, I'm not going to say remember, I do apologize. We still have enough time to be able to add additional positions to our budget requests. This is just our first. This is what we think we'll need. This is a little bit of what we would like to have, but we can always adjust that. So if the CTE team comes back and says, hey, we're going to go, we need cosmetology, we need a cosmetologist or whatever, then we could definitely put that in the budget before March fifteenth? Or March fifteenth?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, anything else? All right, hearing that, I want to thank everyone for jumping in tonight and working through this with all of us. Again, Dr. Sterling, Mr. Rider, thank you for all the work that you've put into this. And that will lead us to, I hope to see you all, I will see you all, not hope to, but I will see you all, Thursday at Franklin High School. And we will make it through this joint session. If anyone has anything come up, questions, reach out, Dr. Sterling, Mr. Rider, or myself between now and Thursday and we'll get an answer to you as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Hearing nothing else, if there are no objections, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone.
All right.
Thank you everyone for attending and I will see you Thursday.
Very good, thank you, stay.
Good night.